Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Danny Frazee is here from Willmont Place Baptist Church in South Oklahoma City. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Let's pray together. Dear heavenly Father, we come this morning in Jesus' name and thank you for this day that you've given us, this gift of today. Lord, I thank you for these men and women who so serve in our community, in our city. I thank you for their efforts. I thank you, Lord, for their time. I thank you for their sacrifices that they give to this city. God, I pray you'd give them just the mind of Christ. I pray as they face oftentimes challenging decisions and not so much between right and wrong, but what's good and best. And I pray, Lord, you would just lead them as they lead us. And so, Lord, we look forward to this new year. We thank you, Lord, that you've given us a brand-new year and new dreams and new beginnings. And, Lord, I pray that this will be one of the greatest years in our city. And so, Lord, we ask you to bless these meetings today and guide us before we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Face the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher in the city of Oklahoma City who has done outstanding work. And this week's recipient is Kimberly Scott of Ralph Downs Elementary School in the Putnam City School District. Let's show our appreciation as she comes forward. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Kimberly Scott has been named Teacher of the Month for January 2015 by Putnam City Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Kimberly has been an art teacher at Ralph Downs Elementary School since 2006. Kimberly began her teaching career in 2002 for a nonprofit fine arts academy while attending the University of Central Oklahoma. Whereas Kimberly is the district elementary visual arts chair and is actively involved in the professional development and training of the district's art teachers. Whereas, besides her regular class schedule, Kimberly makes backdrops for musical productions, helps with school rallies, coaches intramural sports, and provides after-school art enrichment classes. Whereas Kimberly is a Putnam City Schools excellent educator, and she values the opportunity to impact the lives of her students by encouraging them to express themselves creatively. Whereas, when away from school, Kimberly enjoys time spent with husband Jared and their children Kyler and Ava. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Kimberly Scott on her selection as January 2015 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. And to add to the drama, we will need to vote on this. So let's have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. What do you know, it's unanimous. Kimberly, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it. Thank you to the Putnam City Schools Foundation and Carolyn Gist. Without them, our process of schooling and our school year would not be as easy and as enriching. They provide so much for our district, and we truly appreciate it as educators. My principal is not here right at this moment, but I truly also appreciate her. She gives me the liberty to do what I feel like is best for my students, and I really, really appreciate that and her support. I thank you guys for all that you do, and I appreciate that. This is a great honor, and I'm really excited, and I'm excited for what I do every day and being able to help my kids in a different area and help them to feel like they can do wonderful at something and give them that positive uplifting that they need so that they can go back in their classroom and be successful as well.
Thank you. And she teaches kindergarten through fifth grade, so our thoughts and prayers are with you and perhaps for that substitute teacher who's in there this morning. So here's your resolution. Thank you again, and this applause is for you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. James, I'm guessing you had an arts teacher in elementary school in the Putnam City District that did some great work?
Yeah, his name is Mr. Leaf.
Yeah.
He had a profound impact on my life, so.
I'm just glad my art teacher didn't give up on me when I was a kid. I don't think I showed the natural talent, but a lot of the other kids did. We're on item three of the council agenda. Item 3A is a report from Roy Williams, who's the president of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy comes in quarterly to give us an update on things going on in the economic development world and how it applies to us. Roy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you. It's always a pleasure to come here and share with you some of the things we see going on in our marketplace and to get your input on it. First, some good news. We continue to get national and even international accolades on what's going on in Oklahoma City. Currently, we are the ninth most popular destination for movers. Fifty percent of the moves here are inbound, which is a reflection of job growth and our growing ability to attract talent. This is something that U-Haul does. We also, as most of you know, have been singled out by National Geographic as one of the top 30 must-see destinations in the world, which is kind of a wow factor. You never sort of think of National Geographic looking at us. From an earnings growth standpoint, we're in the top three states for earnings growth since 2009, so we're ahead of 47 other states. And one of my favorites is that Kiplinger said that OKC is the number-one city, number-one city in the nation, which to start a business. So that, again, is yet another great accolade for our marketplace. As you all know, because you're on top of this, we're really witnessing a development boom right now. In October, I did an overview for our Board of Directors, not to be comprehensive, but just to look at a sort of a smattering of things going on in the retail sector, health care sector, hospitality, manufacturing, distribution, office, et cetera. And a quick summary shows there's a little over $2 billion underway in capital expenditures across those industry sectors. And what's really exciting is it's happening everywhere. It's not confined to any one sector. It's over every quadrant of the city, over every region of the city. So we're seeing this spread throughout the marketplace. Now, maybe not quite as good a news is we're in the midst of doing our 2015 economic forecast, and obviously, the dramatic drop in oil prices and energy prices have an impact on the city and state. You know that because you project how that impacts your city as well. And this is something we're watching very closely and something we're in dialogue with our energy companies practically every day. We know that solid investments and continuing diversification make our economy much less susceptible to these kind of commodity price fluctuations than they've been in the past, but we also know how critical and important the energy industry is to us. So we know that. And it's vital that we continue to try to bring investment to the area to weather these kind of cyclical downturns of these commodity prices. If you look back to the end of 2014, just a couple of weeks ago, it was a very good year from our economic development standpoint, especially with our partnership with the city. We worked with companies announcing in excess of 6,500 new jobs in our market area. The great thing about these jobs is they reflect an average annual salary of right at $60,000 each. That's nearly $15,000 higher than the Oklahoma County's average wage. So these are very significant, good jobs. These companies also plan on making about a $540 million capital expenditure in our marketplace. Secondary impact to that is probably what you're most interested in, and that is it will generate about $14.5 million in new local tax revenue for the city. If you look at our pipeline, the projects we kind of have in place, we continue to see very good, strong activity. We're currently working on 24 active projects. We won't get all 24 of those, but if you look at the quality of those projects, they represent about 9,500 potential new jobs, just under a half a billion a year in annual payroll, and about $1.3 billion in capital investment. The one thing is, if you look at that pipeline compared to the pipeline a year earlier, it's very similar in size. The exception is we're seeing a pretty significant increase in capital investment projections, which is a good sign. We have a partnership with the city on retail to attract destination and new-to-market retail. That's continuing to show rewards. A couple of examples of Von Mar is reporting a very strong opening in Coyle Springs. They tell us they had an outstanding holiday season and, in fact, exceeded their expectations. As well, our retail and marketing team recently represented Oklahoma City in New York at the International Council of Shopping Centers deal-making event. So it gave us the opportunity to continue to make additional contacts and leads for new destination retail. To further support this industry sector, we also recently launched a new website. It's called www.OKCRetail.com. I encourage you to visit it. It focuses on the retail assets that we have here, market areas that we have here, access to the retail market here, and success stories in the marketplace. It's a real great tool to help the brokerage community here as well. One thing we continually work on is talent. We're currently at 3.9% unemployment, puts us about second or third in the U.S. That's a great number, except if you're looking for employees. And we hear daily from companies about their struggles to attract talent and retain talent because it's such a competitive market. And so, we're looking very closely at the talent attraction programs and retention programs that we, the chamber, do and expanding those, and we're testing some of those programs right now. We also recognize that there isn't a silver bullet in this, that talent is truly a continuum, meaning attracting for today, training for tomorrow, and educating for the future. So we have to address all of those. We're doing some very, I think, important work with the Oklahoma City Public Schools. We're working with a number of community partners and about to enter into a memorandum of agreement that will really maximize the community's efforts, the business community's efforts, to engage with the district and help improve their success. I'll be telling you more about that as we get more definitive on it. Just a couple of other things. Legislative agenda, most all of you know, we have a legislative session that's getting ready to start. The chamber's completed our legislative agenda. We've also completed a joint legislative agenda with the Tulsa Chamber of Commerce. Our top priorities for this particular upcoming session are protecting our critical economic development incentives, funding for regional transportation priorities, trying to help find solutions for Oklahomans who lack health insurance, and then hopefully funding for the American Indian Cultural Center. Unfortunately, as you read in the news, budget challenges may cloud all of these issues and may torpedo a lot of these efforts. Final thing, a couple of events upcoming. The State of the City is tomorrow, so we look forward to seeing each of you there. It's luncheon, 11:30 to 1:00 at the Cox Center. Next Tuesday morning, January 20th, 30 minutes before your council meeting, starting at 8 o'clock, is our legislative breakfast. I know that it's a conflict, but when you look at who we need to have as speakers there, they pretty much drive the agenda, not us, and drive the time. So this was about the only time we could find available space and the right people for presentation. So come early and stay late, if you can. Our annual career fair for Oklahoma college students is on March 5th at the Cox Center, where we do not only internships but also job placement. And finally, on April 15th and 16th is our annual DC Visit Fly-In. This is a really important time for us to talk about our needs with our delegation because we have some new members of our congressional delegation and to really reaffirm our relationships with the Pentagon. Y'all know what's going on with Tinker and what we're trying to do out there, so this is a great time to renew those relationships. So with that, I'll conclude and be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions for Roy? David?
Roy, thank you for your report. Could I just get some clarification? Are you estimating that potential capital budget for 2015 capital development would be about $1.3 billion?
That would be the potential of the prospects that we're dealing with.
Yeah. Well, that would be terrific, and I think it would go a long way in offsetting the potential impact of a long-term reduction in oil prices. So I appreciate all the efforts that the Oklahoma City Chamber does from a recruiting standpoint. And I was reading, in addition to the 6,500 approximately new recruited jobs, just the overall expansion of employment here added another 4,000 jobs during the past year, so a total of over 10,000 new jobs being added. That goes a long way in producing additional revenue for the city. And unfortunately, the demands on our budget continues to grow, so the only way we can meet those demands is through growth in sales tax revenue mainly, and that comes from jobs and jobs creation. So thank you for your efforts and also thank you for your work with a retail study in South Oklahoma City. I think we'll be hearing the reports, the results of that report before too long, and I'm looking forward to those recommendations. Thank you.
Has the chamber determined the incentives, the tax incentives, that they're going to be supportive of continuing? I suspect there's going to be a war on the incentives, and some of those maybe we may have a shared interest in. Some of them we may not, frankly, but there are a number of them that I think we could join forces on. Have you determined what, are you going to wait and see what the, where the shooting starts before you determine what you're going to try? I think we already know where the shooting is. Yes, we have. Not only have we determined ours, but we have a joint one with Tulsa as well. We've been very, very clear on which ones there are. There's about 15 of them that we kind of regularly use. We have prioritized five or six of those. So, yeah, I'd be happy to, I don't have them.
We have our legislative breakfast later in the week, and it'd be nice to have the ones that yours.
I'll get them.
Unless we already do and I just haven't seen it.
No, that'd be great to get those.
I'll get them to.
Because I think that's going to be a real battleground this year in the legislature, whether we can continue to protect historic preservation. There's a lot of different ones that we're vitally interested in. Some we're not, frankly, but.
That particular one?
We've been, that's the royal we. Actually, I'm just really talking about me. Because we haven't, we haven't had a, we haven't discussed them individually yet, but I'm on the legislative committee, and I think we'd like to know what your priorities are because I suspect some of them will coincide very well.
I'm certain they will, yes. Be happy to do that, yes, and work with your lobbyists as well.
Ed?
Well, along similar lines, I mean, I've heard you speak many times very eloquently about public education, and you talked about it today, about how companies, when they're thinking about coming here, look at the number of skilled workers and our public education system and the link between that and economic growth. At a time when the state legislature is ranked very high in terms of cuts to education, we, as a city, over the next year, maybe a couple of years, are looking at unprecedented numbers of zones where we divert taxes, property tax and sometimes sales tax, also called tax increment financing. A big portion of that is diverted away from the public schools. We're looking at possibly ones at the First National Center, Coors Ashore, Wheeler District, Sage Center site, I mean, really kind of uncharted territory for Oklahoma City, not necessarily for other cities around the country. They're very difficult for me to understand. As much as I read and talk, very difficult for me to understand tax increment financing, best practices, best established practices across the country. Many cities have been doing this for 20 years, but I never, when we have these policy discussions, we're trying to figure out policy. I never really have heard any significant input from the schools, from the school board, from the, those making public education policy. Haven't really heard, or we haven't been, we haven't discussed with you, the chamber's position on what are the best established practices in other cities? What has worked? What has maybe adversely impacted schools? I know that many cities have tried to maybe carve out schools in some of these tax diversions. There have been payments in lieu of taxes to schools. Can you, can you talk, can you talk about best established practices either now or in the future? Is there a way that we could work together on trying to figure out what's worked and what hasn't worked in other cities?
As you just articulated, kind of every place does it different. There are so many different ways tax increment financing is implemented, and you cited a few of them, and there's a whole lot more. And it's really hard to say, you know, what is best practices. It's much more sort of what works in your environment and what achieves the ends you're trying to achieve. So it, it's really sort of difficult to say, well, this is the best way to do it because cities have been doing these, you know, for, like you said, centuries almost. And so, you kind of really have to look at each one individually as opposed to a blanket way of addressing it because what you're trying to achieve over here versus what you're trying to achieve over here may be a very different thing. But everything you pointed out kind of goes into the mix of consideration. Our International Economic Development Organization has done a lot of research in that. I'd be happy to share some of that with you, but what you're not going to find is a solution that says, this is the answer. This is how it should be done. Because sometimes it's redevelopment, sometimes it's new development, sometimes it's a mix of both, but there's, there's 100 different examples, if not more, of how that kind of financing has been utilized in different communities. And while it's property tax-driven, in a number of communities, property tax is not a critical component of financing, in others, it's the only source of funding. So, you know, there's, it's a very complex issue without a real simple answer.
I guess one answer I'm looking maybe for your help in helping us to establish is, what is the threshold at which you start to impact public education? I mean, for the TIFs, we've already established the budget is somewhere in the $400 million range. That's bigger than the first maps. At what point, what is the threshold where you start to impact public education? And how many, as we're now talking about 13 or 14, how many, what would that threshold be? The second thing is, there was an article, I think about the second time the Oklahoman has run this, where they cited a study this last weekend of this negative relationship between using eminent domain activity and economic growth, and they cited that a one standard deviation increase in eminent domain activity was associated with a 1% decline in local economic rate of growth. We're going to use, I guess, we're going to use eminent domain for the Convention Center site, and we're going to use some of that along the boulevard for private development. Do you have a thought about what the literature says or what other cities have done between the amount of eminent domain activity and its impact on economic growth in that local environment?
Well, again, it's almost as complex as the TIF issue. I mean, and just as an example, you know, the Convention Center site is basically vacant land. So when you do eminent domain on that, you're really not interfering with any kind of, or disrupting any kind of business activity, ongoing business activity, versus if you utilize it somewhere else where there is actual activity going on. So it's really kind of, again, a case-by-case look at what is the intent, what is the process, and what is the end result? Because even going back to some of the comments you were making about TIF, some have impacts on the school district where some may not. It may not, some may not generate a single new student into the education system. So there may not be an economic impact to a school district. So it, but you can't say that blanketly because every case is different. So I think you have to study it project by project by project as opposed to a blanket kind of assessment of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I could just clarify something as well. I think it's really important when we're talking about tax increment financing to remember the middle word. It's increment, which means it's new dollars. So when you're using words like diversion of dollars to the school district, we're not diverting current dollars to the school district or any part of their existing budget. It's a diversion, if you will, or a different application of new dollars that wouldn't have existed if we didn't have that tax increment financing or the project in the first place.
Well, respectfully, I would disagree. I mean, if I have a home, my property tax is going to increase over the next 25 years whether there's development around my home or not. So we're taking the increment of the existing homes or existing businesses, and the increment over that 25 years will be diverted. It's the increment of everything, new development and existing development. So it's not, so you're capping whatever your property tax is today, but all property tax is going to increase just by its own inertia and inflation, and that increment.
Maybe or maybe not. I mean, I think an example of that could be the First National Building. It's probably going to have a TIF if the First National Building is going to be, you know, rebirthed. And it has had, I mean, that's a declining value for that property over the last 20 years, or it certainly hasn't been growing. It's going down. So if you've got something like that, that there, that is a true, first of all, it isn't going to probably happen without a TIF, and there is new growth in there that will be generated because of that. And it has been stagnant, and probably, you know, it's the but-if, but for the TIF, it's probably not going to get redeveloped.
Meg, were you through?
Yes.
Okay.
It does seem to me that the First National is a perfect example of something Roy pointed out, and that is that they're so different. First National is one of those that goes back to the original idea of how this stuff got started, that the development wouldn't occur without it. It's like the Skirvin was. That's a perfect, classic example of all those tax credits and all the things that were built into that. It wouldn't have occurred without it. I think when you get beyond that, there are, there is other development that might have occurred, and this has become a bonus for that developer. I think there's a, I think that points out exactly the difference between why it's so complicated, because they're so different in purpose, so many of them. There's one other comment I wanted to make. I went with you, the chamber, to the city visitation two or three years ago, and one of the things I was struck by, that a good half of the time we were there, we talked about education. And as I looked around that group, there wasn't one educator at the elementary school level in attendance. And I remember suggesting to somebody, and I don't want to hold anybody responsible because my memory doesn't tell me who I suggested it to, that you scholarship or something to get members of the Oklahoma City Board of Education or the Metro Techs or somebody with you, because I thought half the conversation was about education. About, we talked about one thing, but we'd go to education about, and I wondered if that, if you've done that, and that, this is not part of your report, but it's just something that occurred to me while we were talking about.
Well, and to your point, pretty much every one of our intercity visits, we've done nine of them now, have had some education focus on that we've looked at. You may be referring to Minneapolis. I'm not sure which one, but.
Minneapolis.
But we do, we do invite all the school board members.
Right.
We invite the superintendent, you know, and we, I mean, we really don't limit who can go on these.
No, I didn't get the impression that they were limited. What my impression was, they weren't there.
True.
And so, some way or another, they, some form or fashion, we've got to find a way to get them there. Because I think those are the people that were, that right down there where the rubber meets the road with regard to education. meets the road with regard to education. It's those people that are volunteering, literally volunteering to serve on the school board, or, or what we used to make as council members, and we revolted against that a few years ago, that $100, there's a $100 a month thing. So I, I think more, well, I don't know, that's your, whether more of it ought to be done or not, you're, and I'm not trying to...
I think it's a great, great suggestion, and we'll...
I just think they're so vital to what, every time we talk about, you talk about we're looking for employees and looking for qualified employees and all that, we've got to do a better job, we've got to make that connection better. The chamber, the city, the, the public education, just got to be better.
I agree with you completely.
Okay. David, did you want to say something?
Well, just that, in regards to the TIF, Jim, perhaps we could have, from Kathy O'Connor's group, some information put together. For example, yesterday, a meeting that Roy was at, Councilman Pettis was at, you know, we looked at a study as to the impact on revenue to the various recipients, including school districts in the city of St. Louis as a result of a TIF. And they were able to, based upon this study, demonstrate that they received additional funds with or without, they did a comparison of with the TIF and without it. And with the TIF, because of the increased development, their school district actually received a larger amount of revenue. So I think there are studies out there throughout the country that will demonstrate when a TIF has been successful, like in the case of St. Louis with their Innovation District. And then perhaps areas where the TIF may have had a negative impact. But it just seems that there's a lot of evidence to where you'll find that it was actually a positive move to create the TIF, and everybody benefited from it. Certainly, even from an indirect source, as far as all the work this Innovation District is now beginning to do with the public school systems of St. Louis, they are certainly the recipients of a lot of efforts and benefits to upgrade the overall education system that I don't think they would have received otherwise. So that's an indirect benefit, but just the dollar amount was greater with the TIF than without it.
All right. Roy, with that, we'll let you go.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. And we'll get the information.
Okay. I also want to draw attention that Oklahoma City Latino Leadership Class II was in the audience today. Would you guys please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you very much. David Castillo heads that group up, and if there are others who would like to be a part of David's ongoing efforts to increase the amount of leadership in, in the Latino community, we would love for them to get involved. And David, we appreciate it, and let us know how we can support you. We're on to item four of the council agenda. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal for January 6th, and item B is to approve the Journal for December 30th. Comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I just have two this morning. One on page five on the consent docket. I'd ask that item Q, or six Q be stricken. We'll bring that back at a later date. Again, that's on page five, item six Q. And then moving to page nine, page nine under eight C1G, eight C1G, 2425 Southeast 51st Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured that property.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Then we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. It's like there are five items. A motion and a second. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. I'll note that one of those items was the purchase of new golf carts for, is that coming up?
That's coming up.
Oh, that's coming up. That's on the next item. That's on the PPA. All right, getting ahead of myself a little bit there. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, three items. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now, let me recognize a couple of the golf commissioners, Leroy Richardson and Kerry Decker, in the audience today. And I noticed Lincoln Park head pro Steve Carson was here. Steve, would you come up and give us an update on the, the new clubhouse? An extraordinary capital investment in northeast Oklahoma City is taking place at 36th and Grand. And I assume it's about to open, Steve. What's the latest on the clubhouse?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and Mr. Manager. Yes, the golf, golf clubhouse project is probably in the 90 to 95% finished range, and we're looking forward to an opening and getting in the building sometime next month. So it, if anybody'd like to come by and get the tour, we'll glad, be glad to do that. It's a fantastic building, and there's a lot of excitement out there in the golf community about the prospects of the building and the ability to host large events, the ability to host multiple events. And we're excited to get the new golf carts, because it'll fit right in with our entire business plan.
Well, we appreciate your work, and please pass along our compliments to the staff.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today.
Move the add.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
I would be, I'm subject to individual considerations.
All right, any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Mayor, I'd like to just mention six I.
I. All right. Ben, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a contract for engineering services with a consultant to do a downtown drainage study. It covers a very wide range from Northwest 15th Street, Northwestern and Lincoln. It straddles both Ward, Ward Six and Ward Seven. But I certainly have some constituents in and around 15th, or Fourth and Chertel, Fourth and Walker, that have experienced serious flooding issues with the last couple of historic rains that we've had. And I know they are all delighted to see this come up on the agenda. Thank you, Eric, for, for sticking with it. I, I know it's taken a while to put this contract in place, but excited to hear about the results. And I know we'll have to work on funding for suggestions once we get a little bit further down the road, but at least putting a study in place will help us identify what the true issues are. Thank you.
Your Honor, I would suggest as funds become available, that we try to include the whole city, because we have drainage problems scattered throughout the city. Small drainage problems, but they're easy to be addressed.
You brought that up before, and we're moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, but overall, the drainage in the city has drastically improved from what it was two, three decades ago.
Absolutely.
Now, I can remember the, the news events that would be created by massive floodings in neighborhoods, and still takes place in the greater metro and other municipalities. But I, I think we've come a long way with our bond issue work for the last 20 years in addressing the worst needs.
But if there's only one house at risk, and it's your house, we still have profits.
Well put. All right, we ready to vote the consent docket?
In that regard, I wonder how much revenue can be generated by that fee on garbage.
Yeah, the drainage fee. We can certainly get that information for it.
I mean, that's been a huge, huge contributor also.
It has.
Bondage.
When was that instituted?
Probably several years. Yeah, fifteen to 20 years ago, I guess.
I think, wasn't it about the time that we did, you know, it was already placed before the rural trash collection thing?
It was in, it was in that same era.
That was one of the big objections to the rural trash service, mandatory rural trash service, was you pick up that drainage fee in addition to, they weren't paying, people in the rural area weren't paying at that time, because they didn't get any kind of open access. So it's been a long time.
I'll get you some information on that.
All right, let's vote the consent docket. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
Move yes.
All right, any comments or questions here from council? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we'll move on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. Item eight A is our final public hearing on the proposed TIF nine, and we have one person who has signed up to speak, Reverend John Peoples.
To the honorable members of the Oklahoma City Council and counselor and manager and mayor, I'm standing here this morning as pastor of the Faith Memorial Baptist Church, located at 3117 North Kelly Avenue in Oklahoma City. And on the behalf of the members of Faith Memorial Baptist Church, and myself, I note that item number eight A, the ordinance of the final hearing, emergency relating to the Northeast Renaissance redevelopment. And inasmuch, Your Honor, as this is the final hearing on this, and as a pastor, in what I understand to be within the boundaries of this area, and it was only within the past week or so that I heard anything about it, and as a quote leader in the community, to not know what's going on in my community puts me at somewhat of a disadvantage. And so I'm here to express that concern, the fact that I have no definitive information on what the Northeast Renaissance redevelopment boundaries are, nor what the project plan is. And so when my members asked me, and I don't know how they heard about it, but somehow they did, and somehow it got to me, and so I'm here for, I guess I would say, some education. I need to be able to stand before my congregation and articulate to them what's going on in the community in which they live. And at this particular moment, I feel inadequate in my ability to be able to do that. And for the 50 odd years that I've served as a pastor, more recently here in Oklahoma City, I don't like to be at a disadvantage in articulating to my congregation what's going on around them. I don't know what your process for getting that information to the persons within that boundary, and I feel confident that we end from the sources that I've received this information from. So number one, I want to know why I haven't heard about it. And number two, I want more importantly, to know what it is.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we have some people in the room here. Well, if you'll have a seat, we'll have some people come up and explain it, because despite our best efforts to try and educate people and hold public meetings on this effort, you're probably not the only one that's affected that, that has not heard about it. Who would like to come up and address in general the, the area in which it is going to be affected, both on the receiving end and on the giving end?
Well, in general, the area is Northeast 23rd Street, from slightly east of Lincoln Boulevard to the Oklahoma River. It runs along Martin Luther King South to Fourth Street, and then north to about 42nd Street, and then again in a corridor along Kelly from, I mean, Kelly goes to 42nd Street to 23rd. MLK goes from about 27th down to Fourth.
Could we get Reverend Peoples a map?
I have a map right here.
Perhaps take with him, and so when he meets with his congregation next?
I would be glad to do that.
Okay. And John, you might explain some of the public process that you've been going through on this, because I know you've been working on it for quite some time.
Sure, too, and I'm going to ask at this time, Michael Owens, would you please come up and explain the community engagement piece as it relates to the Northeast Renaissance TIF? Michael Owens is the Alliance Community Development Director.
Good morning, Mayor and the council. It's a privilege to be here this morning. We have, we have done extensive community engagement. Pastor Peoples is my good friend, and, and I respect him, and I want him to be included. Of course, you realize it's impossible to reach every individual in the community, but we have held countless meetings during the day, in the evening. We have created a Northeast Stakeholders Committee that we meet with every fourth Wednesday. Mayor came down and, and had a conversation with the stakeholder committee. We have did countless focus groups, gathering the input from the community when it comes to development. We have done an extensive, I, I've been told that, that no other project has had as much community engagement as we have done. And as you know, engagement is an ongoing process, so it's, it doesn't end here. And we're really at the infant stages of redevelopment in the Northeast community. So I just ask those that, and, and we've been to Pastor Peoples' church, and we, we've held community meetings at his church. I know Councilman Pettis has been there a couple of times. And, and so with that said, I, I want the council to know we are committed, not just in lip service, but we're committed to have engagement, involvement in the decision-making process as we move forward. And we, you know, this, this keeps us focused too, right? I mean, it, it helps us to, to realize that there are some out there that have not received, you know, the information, but we will continue to work on that. But I, I want you to rest assured, we've done a very good thorough job thus far, and including the community. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions from council on item eight A? John, you want to make a motion?
Move forward.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And Francis is telling me the emergency's appropriate here.
Move forward.
Cast your votes.
What's the emergency?
The, the emergency is the Alliance has several developments that they would like to push through the process, and so that, that is the emergency.
Well, the emergency passes eight one. On to item eight B. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Just one piece of property listed today. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item eight B?
No.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight C is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight C? All right, do we have a motion?
Move yes.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight D is a resolution for a memorandum of understanding with the FOP that would allow an early promotional exam procedure for the rank of lieutenant.
There's a process within the contract for the promotion process, and Bill, Chief City has exhausted the list, and so this is to, to get the, the process started again so he can do some additional promotions, and it's agreement between the FOP and the city, memorandum of understanding.
All right, is there a motion on eight D?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight E, understand we do not need executive session on this item, Kenny?
Do not.
Okay. How about a motion then to move this forward?
Move down.
All right, cast your votes on eight E. It passed unanimously. Item eight F, understand we do not need to discuss this item today, so a motion to strike would be in order. Cast your votes. Item eight F is struck from the agenda. Item eight G, understand we do need executive session here.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move item eight G into executive session. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine A is a ordinance that's being introduced today and has to do with bicycle regulations. And we'd be setting a public hearing on January 20th, and we have a few people that have signed up to speak today.
Your Honor, before they come, I'd like to suggest an amendment.
Okay.
And passed out to the members of the council. And I think the municipal council has additional copies for the audience who might want to read it. And I, we've amended the, or I move we amend the proposal to adopt in our basing regulation the same requirement we had in the automobile regulation. So the two are exactly the same. When you're overtaking or passing a motor vehicle, the 32, the 36-inch law becomes obligatory on both the bicycle and the automobile.
Okay.
It just moves it along a little bit. And the second, I've had a lot of questions or comments about the fact that we have adopted state law in here, which is necessary, but I had a conversation with municipal council this morning, and he could explain it a little bit further than I can, as to why we have that item in there.
Yes, the provision that's in state law now is the proposed subsection D about no person operating a bike shall pass other vehicles between lanes of traffic, traveling in the same direction. And that comes from state law, but we can't enforce it at the city level unless it's a... And that comes from state law, but we can't enforce it at the city level unless it's an ordinance. So right now, just being in state law, only the district attorney can enforce it.
I move the amendment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is this on the amendment?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. The amendment passes. I know we're just introducing this item today, and we're going to call for a public hearing on January 20th, but we have some people that have signed up to speak. As long as they keep their comments short, I don't have a problem with them speaking today.
I think it's fine. Some of their concerns may have been addressed by this amendment.
Okay.
We're hoping so, because we picked up the line of this amendment from a witness who came in last week, I believe it was, and spoke about this, because he was under the understanding that we were going to adopt it that way.
Okay, well, yeah, this might save him a trip back, so let's go ahead and see.
Yeah, Pete, we will need your name and address for the record. My name is Pete Kramer. I live at 3212 Windsor Terrace in Oklahoma City. My comments, I'm going to keep very brief, and I appreciate Councilman Ryan's amendment to his proposal, and we, obviously, we just received copies of it, so we need to take a look at it. What I would like to do today is offer to this council a petition that has been online for about a week, has 126 signatures of adult cyclists who ride in Oklahoma City that are opposed to the ordinance changes as they were originally drafted. So we'll need to take a look at this. But what the petition, in summary, asks for is that, number one, the council not consider the proposed amendment as was introduced, and of course, it has now been amended again, so we need to take a look at that, but also to consider the impact on our law enforcement community. Our police officers have a difficult task, as it is now, to enforce existing ordinances. The city passed a three-foot safe passing law for motorists passing bicycles in 2006, I believe, and to my knowledge, that ordinance has never had a citation written under it. Okay, two ordinances, two citations, okay. But as I, it was explained to me by a police officer, unless they actually witnessed the infraction, they cannot enforce the ordinance. And lastly, again, I think it's the council's intent is to hear the bicycling community on these proposed changes before they get to a vote. Oklahoma City has applied to become a bicycle-friendly community through the League of American Bicyclists, and the process would help if the cyclists were involved before this was introduced, rather than in the middle of it. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pete.
And so I give the petition to you. Thank you.
Good morning.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
William Drake, 1116 Northwest 43rd Street, Oklahoma City. I agree with Pete that this is just unnecessary legislation. In fact, it's already covered by many statutes, both in the city and state, such as scooters and bicycles passing between cars. That's already a state thing that's unenforceable. Unfortunately, we do have cyclists that try to do that. I make it a habit not to, because I hate making drivers mad that have already gone around me once. But I just want to agree with Pete, that I believe that there are other laws and statutes that cover this, what I have written down here, which I probably won't be able to read off in the next three minutes, but I can give it to your clerk, and they can research it.
All right.
Thank you for your time and patience.
Thanks, William.
Bill Elliott, 4418 Northwest 60th Street, Ward 1. And thanks for letting me come back to talk to you this week. I think the other two gentlemen have probably covered most of what I want to say. I want to emphasize the bicycle-friendly community. I talked about that last week. It's a program where the city can enroll to be recognized at the national level as a bicycle-friendly community. Carries quite prestige, and in the coming weeks, we will be talking with you about, is this something that Oklahoma City wants to pursue going forward? Towns like Dallas or Tulsa have already got to this level, bronze level, and perhaps it's time for Oklahoma City to take that step and look at the value of going through this process. One of the criteria is, does the city promote bicycle-friendly ordinances? And I'm afraid if we start passing non-bicycle-friendly ordinances, it may restrict our chance of ever receiving recognition as a bicycle-friendly community. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Bill.
I got a question for the, because to me, this amendment, it changes, changes the wording to basically put the burden of the three-foot rule on the vehicle that is doing the passing. So right now, on our books, a car has to give three feet to pass a bicycle. And so this amendment change would make it to where if a bike is going to pass a car, they have to give a three foot. And I think that's the only way you can interpret it. I don't know any way that you could interpret it. So do you think that that is reasonable, or is it not reasonable?
You know, I haven't had a chance to review this. I just got it about a minute ago.
Right.
And we do have legal representation in Washington, DC. I'd like to run this past them to see what their opinion is. Bottom line is still, is the city promoting bicycle-friendly ordinances? And this may or may not move in that direction.
Okay.
And if the city is interested in trying to become a bicycle-friendly community in the future, we need to keep that in mind.
Okay.
So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Bill, would you direct an email or two to me to explain why you think this is a bicycle unfriendly ordinance?
I'd be glad to.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak before you all. My address is 619 Northwest 28th Street, and I live in Ward 2 in the Paseo. And actually, I ride my bike to work at Oklahoma City University, where I teach English and Film Studies. I have a helmet, my mom made sure I do, and I have lights on my bike and a lock, and I consider myself a responsible cyclist, and I just want to say that I support everything that I heard previously. I just want to make sure that your, these amendments, which I plan on reviewing, just want to make sure that they show the same respect that we do for pedestrians, the bicyclists, to make sure that as we work toward putting in bike lanes and stuff like that, that until that time, that we make sure that motorists are treating bicyclists with the same respect and dignity. That's something I'm very much looking forward to reviewing. So I can tell you, when I'm out there riding my bike, I see people biking from Devon. When I'm going down to Film Row to grade papers, and I see people from all walks of life using their bike and trying to do so responsibly. So I just want to make sure that as our city grows, and we want to be this big league city, that we are treating bicyclists respectfully. So thank you very much.
I'd be glad to hear if you have objections, if you feel that we're taking anything away from bicyclists. It was our, it was my intent, rather, not to take anything away from them. And so I think that needs to be made clear over and over again. We have added this additional, what I think is a measure to promote bicycle safety, and new wording, I think, it is exactly.
Well, I look forward to reviewing that wording. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Because in a lot of ways, I mean, this is actually, in my view, it protects bicyclists from cars even further. I mean, it, you know, by making the rules the same, going both directions. So I, I don't know, I see it as a positive to motorists and cyclists.
Yeah, I don't think I knew what the regulations were. I mean, if you had told me I can't get two feet or four feet from a bike, I wouldn't have known the difference. Common sense typically prevails in the absence of, you know, fairly arbitrary foot distance. Yeah. Larry?
From what I've heard, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, your idea is to promote bicycle safety. So what you're proposing, you feel is good for bicyclists, and promotes then a friendly community approach to bicycling. How do we get that vision to the folks that are actually doing the bike riding, to see if they can concur and come to an agreement that, hey, this does do that, or if it doesn't, if we did this, this, and this change, it would? How is this process going to work in the next two weeks to come to some type of substantive agreement?
We'll have a public hearing next Tuesday to give the bicycle community a chance to comment on our vision. And the city manager is, I mean, he told me this would be a firestorm, so, but anyway, I do think it goes to providing a safer place for bicycles to ride. And we are, we're adopting the state law is exactly what the municipal council said earlier. In order for the Oklahoma City people to enforce it and take it to municipal court, it has to be on our, just because it's state law, doesn't mean we can enforce it or get it for it.
And some, they could propose amendments or changes to the, to the proposed amendments that are in our ordinance, if they, if they want to submit those to the councilman or to me.
And one suggestion I made several months ago, when we first talked about bicycle lanes, was we needed to get to the state to revise their handbook to show more respect for bicycles. Right now, is bicycles shall comply with all the same laws as automobiles? Well, I think that's not quite true anymore. We've carved out a separate protection, a separate set of ordinances. I think that the state manual needs to be revised to reflect that. And if it is, I think that's a major step towards a bicycle-friendly.
All right. And it may not pass, keep in mind that, you know, the vote's January 27th. Okay, so public hearing, January 20th on this issue. Final hearing, January 27th. We'll need a motion and a second to move this forward. All right, cast your votes. Item moves forward. All right, item 9B is a resolution that would provide some modification to our urban renewal laws, and this has been brought forward by Councilman Greiner and Shadid. We do have three people that have signed up to speak today. You guys want to listen to them before or after?
I might just say a word first. This, it's important, I think, to understand what this, what this amendment would do would refer the matter to the Urban Renewal Board. There'd be no action by the council today. By state statute, if you were going to change the urban renewal plan, it would go to the Urban Renewal Board, who would decide if it was desirable or not. Then it would go to the Planning Commission, then it would come back to the city council for discussion and a final vote. So today's vote is simply whether we feel that we want to refer the amendment to the Urban Renewal Board for their consideration, and to hear from them whether they think it's desirable or not. Having, looking at the history of Oklahoma City, having the Urban Renewal Board utilize eminent domain, even perhaps meaning well, there have been mistakes made over the decades, some of them disastrous, some of them with significant consequences. And so this is, this is an attempt to give those whose property might be seized by the Urban Renewal Board an extra step in the appeal process, to bring it before the council, to have the council affirm or deny the urban renewals decision to seize property. Wouldn't go to fairness as to price that would be dealt with in the court system. It's simply the council affirming or denying whether the action of eminent domain was appropriate. We heard of a policy shift a couple of weeks ago. It's been in multiple newspapers, on the radio, here from the horseshoe, that eminent domain will be used as a means of seizing property where criminal activity may occur, and that that would be used as an economic development tool. That would represent a major policy shift for urban renewal for the city of Oklahoma City. And I just am urging discussion at the Urban Renewal Board before we potentially move down that path. The city has legal mechanisms to fight blight. I talked to Chief City, he indicated, I mean, we can, we can take a business to, we can sanction them in district court, and the district court can say this business has to do X, Y, and Z. We've done that, and we've done that successfully. If this amendment were to pass, if someone's property were seized, they would come before the council, they would make their case, maybe they can't afford legal representation, this would be a chance to have a public hearing. And the city would, would look to the city manager and the police chief and ask if the city's done all that it can through its mechanisms, through sanctioning in district court, through the police department. If we've done everything that we can, and if so, then we would affirm potentially the use of eminent domain. But it would be a chance for the person whose property was being seized to ask the council, have you done everything through your mechanisms first? I've heard maybe three arguments against this in the last week. One is that it doesn't happen, urban renewal doesn't use eminent domain. My response would be, if it doesn't happen, then it won't be an issue for the council. It won't, it won't come. If eminent domain is not used, it won't come before the council. But we are starting to use eminent domain. We're using eminent domain at the convention center site. We're taking that land from one private developer, and we're going to give a certain portion along the boulevard to other private developers. So we are starting to see the utilization of eminent domain, to transfer property from one private individual to another corporation or private individual. The second is that we could potentially starve the beast, and I've heard this, that you could just not fund the urban renewal if they did something that the council didn't like. The problem with that is it sets up this antagonistic relationship. You're calling the Urban Renewal Board the beast, and it just, it sets up, it's uncomfortable, it's never been done before. The city council's never not funded the Urban Renewal Board for an action. And there are other mechanisms of funding. A private developer could give the money to the Urban Renewal Board. There are federal pass-through funds for the Urban Renewal Board. The money, my understanding is that the increment goes to the Economic Development Trust, and the Economic Development Trust actually gives the money, not the city council. The third reason is that we don't do this with other things. The council doesn't review, like historical preservation, we stopped doing that. We don't review other bodies' work. The problem is that this is, this is, other than taking someone's life or taking their freedom by imprisoning them, seizing property is probably the third most powerful action a government can take. And to have that responsibility, the only eyes and ears looking at that be three unelected individuals, that seems like too much power concentrated in one body. And so just having a public hearing, a much more public hearing than you would have at the Urban Renewal Board, having a public hearing at the city council with all the eyes and ears looking at it and signing off on it, I think would be much more responsible government. Thanks.
James, do you want to say anything before we hear from these three?
Yeah, just that last part that he talked about, I think that we're the most accountable to the citizens. And so I think that having that, having that extra layer of protection to property owners, I think is appropriate. And it only will happen if the property owner disputes the taking of it. So if it happens, it's not going to happen very often, you know, so it will, but it's just, just that extra layer of protection.
Your Honor, may I ask a question? Ed or James, just for clarification. So if we pass this amendment, then it just goes to the Urban Renewal Authority, and unless they agree to it, it has no effect. Is that true? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, that's true.
Yes, the Urban Renewal Authority, as the first step in making a modification to an urban renewal plan, has to determine that the modification is desirable. If they determine it is not, if they don't determine it's desirable, then that, there is no modification going forward. It would, basically would end at that point.
Okay. And then the second question, Ed, did you say anything related to the price being offered to the property owner would not come back to the city council? It's only whether or not the property should be subject to eminent domain. Is that a true statement?
No, council can't determine the price of property that's going to be taken by eminent domain. You make an offer, a good-faith offer, to buy the property, and when that's denied, it goes to court, and then a board of three commissioners, and then potentially a jury would determine the actual price of the property.
Okay, so I understand all that, and that sounds good. Now, it's the council, though, that determines whether or not property should be subject to eminent domain, though. Is that not true, like in this case in Northeast Oklahoma City?
Not for blighted property. Once you authorize it in the urban renewal plan, only, only the Urban Renewal Authority can take property for elimination of blight. The city does not have that authority.
We only have the ability to take property for public use.
Right, for specifically authorized
With respect.
Public uses in the statutes, like a public park or a building site or something like that.
All right, Brady Henderson?
Mayor, can I just clarify one thing as Brady's coming forward? There are
There are, how many members of the Urban Renewal Authority? Aren't there five?
Five, there's five.
Not three?
It takes a majority, so three. It could take as little as three. Five. Larry Nichols, Mark Beffer, Mary Mellon, Jim Tollbert, Russell Perry.
All right, Brady, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Certainly, Brady Henderson. I live at 419 Northwest 20th Street, here in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. For any of you who don't know me, I'm the legal director at the American Civil Liberties Union of Oklahoma, a place where, more than anything else, we effectively are there to defend three fundamental rights: life, liberty, and property. I would actually put them in the order of liberty, life, and property, but that's just me. And I'm here today because this modification or amendment gives the council a rare opportunity to help ensure the protection of two out of the three. And that's, of course, the right to property, but also liberty. One of the concerns that I think always comes when we have an eminent domain situation is this: eminent domain is not inherently bad, but it is something that's also not inherently good. It's something we do because we have to, not because we want to, because the normal processes of disposition of property are inadequate in a particular situation. What that means is there's automatically a potential for people to get rubbed the wrong way, to put it most mildly, or, at the other end, to get absolutely injured by government in an incorrect or abusive action. All that this amendment does, it doesn't create any grand new process, it doesn't create anything mandatory, but it allows a safety valve. One of the things about this council that is rather unique is that it's free, it's open, it's transparent, it's accountable. All this does is allow somebody to appeal a decision, not just somebody, a property owner, to appeal a decision to this body, rather than having to hire a lawyer to go to court, doing so in a way that's more efficient for them and more efficient for this city. It provides a safety valve where, instead of an unelected body making the decision, here we have an elected group of council, a mayor, making that decision. This is a rare opportunity to do something that is better for citizens' rights, but also, by its very nature, costs the city nothing. Or at least, that's my estimation. In fact, I think I would go farther than that and say that, if anything, in the rare instances where this amendment actually comes up, and I think it is likely to be rare, it doesn't create a mandatory process, it simply allows a citizen to do something if they so choose. In those rare instances, it can give someone the opportunity to be heard, not just at a cost far lower for them, but a cost far lower for the city, without having to have the counselor go to court, without having to enter the court case, but simply to be doing what this body does all the time, which is listen. And what is incredibly important, when we're talking about eminent domain, two things matter. One is getting to the right result. It's not making the ad hoc mistakes. But the other is making sure that the citizens of a community and of a neighborhood have buy-in to that process. Making sure that, at the end of the day, when a citizen is affected by city action, he or she says, whether I agree with it or not, I was treated fairly, I had my opportunity to say what I wanted to say, somebody listened to me. That's what this amendment's about, and that's why we wholeheartedly support it.
All right. Thanks, Brady. Michael Henel? Michael, not here? All right, James Cooper?
Good to see you all again. It feels like we just had this moment. Well, I spoke with a nice woman in the room next door, and that's how I ended up here. I just wanted to speak, actually, in favor of what I'm seeing over on the northeast side. I think she meant to put me on the earlier one to speak, but I just wanted to say that I'm very, very, very happy to see the progress that's going on over there right now. I mentioned I teach at OCU, but I also teach at UCO. And earlier, I heard a lot of talk about the impact that some of these decisions that we're making with TIF will have on education. Well, I wanted to let you-
James, you have to stick to the topic here.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say I support this. Sorry I ended up being here, but I just wanted to say I support the urban renewal project on northeast side. So whatever you all do, cast that vote in favor of that action. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on this side?
Can you review what happens if we approve or disapprove it?
Kenny?
Yes, if it's not approved, if you disapprove it, then it doesn't go to the Urban Renewal Authority for them to consider this as a possible amendment to the plan, the urban renewal plan. If you approve the resolution, it goes to the Urban Renewal Authority for their five members to determine whether it's a desirable amendment or not. If they then determine it's desirable, it goes on to the Planning Commission, and then would come back to the council for final approval. If it, if they determine it's not desirable based on the way the urban renewal law is worded, that would be the end of the process.
And Kenny, could I clarify, please? This is just an amendment to the Northeast Renaissance Urban Renewal Plan.
Correct.
This is not-
Not every-
A rewrite of any other urban renewal policies. This strictly relates to northeast Oklahoma City.
Just this one that you adopted, I believe, on December 30th.
It just adds a subsection to the section dealing with eminent domain.
Okay.
And acquisition of property.
Okay, I would like to ask a question, and since it's restricted to just the northeast development, I'm satisfied with us moving forward with that. I think this is very important to that. I'm going to say, you got to follow me, both to the northeast part of Oklahoma City, but also to the entire city. I think whenever we have an area that's depressed or having some issues to deal with, it impacts the entire city. So, I mean, I don't know what new information I'll obtain if we have this appeals process since it's related strictly to the northeast Oklahoma City area. I'm in favor of the project. I think we need to move forward with this. So help me understand what could happen, why we would need this particular amendment, if you don't mind, Ed or James.
Well, you know, the, you know, the reason I voted against the urban renewal plan to begin with is because I felt like the eminent domain issue was too open-ended, even though it was restricted to some extent. So I felt like it was too open-ended. What this amendment does is that it puts another, it puts a layer of protection for eminent domain to not be used inappropriately. And so, that's what I would say is the benefit. It's going to benefit every property owner that's in that area from being treated unfairly by an unelected body. So I would say that that's the benefit of what the amendment will do.
Yeah, Ed, please.
I don't think there's anything, well, not anything. I mean, I'd be in favor of doing it citywide. I don't think that it should, needs to be restricted just to this one. I think this is what's before us now, and this is what was announced publicly, that we're going to have a policy shift. The example was if there was a car wash in which drugs were being sold from the car wash, that that car wash will be seized. And in that particular case, you'd want to come before the body, ask chief city, did we sanction them in court? Did we, has law enforcement gone by the car wash? Has the police done everything that can be done? And then if chief city says, yes, we've done everything that can be done, it's a public health hazard, we can't do anything else, city manager says the same thing, then potentially the city council would sign off on it.
Ed, would you outline what criteria the council would use, other than just one you just mentioned about the police and a crime scene, a reputable, a reputation of being a crime?
Well, I think you'd, it'd be on a case-by-case basis, but you'd ask the city manager, you'd ask the police chief, have all alternatives to eminent domain been utilized to improve the public health and to improve the public good? And if they had, and you still had this threat to the public health, then the city council could potentially authorize it. But it would be a chance for the city council to, in a public hearing, confirm that all of its means had been utilized. We had done everything that we could.
On a crime location, or alleged crime location, or just in general? We run the risk, not the risk, we run the possibility by adopting this kind of amendment for people to come in who have no association with a crime, alleged crime activity, criminal activity, just to get more money?
We wouldn't handle the money part. That would be deferred to the courts.
But I think the very threat of coming before the council, not threat, the possibility of coming before this council would give them additional leverage.
It could, but it could work the other way, Pat. If they came before the council, and you had a unanimous vote of the council, that eminent domain is appropriate, I mean, their position in court could be undermined. It could actually backfire on them if you had this public hearing, and it was very clear that they were harming the public health, and they weren't doing what needed to be done.
Is that the only criteria we would use, public health?
I don't, I think, no, this is for eminent domain. If you're seizing private property, transferring it to another corporation or private individual, it's not. But that was the policy shift that was announced a couple of weeks, that's been throughout the media, it's been announced to the public. And so, that's the one, you know, that I'm focused on, but it's all eminent domain action.
All right, Larry, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused on all this. I've been involved with nuisance abatement since becoming a councilman in 2001. We do have on the books, do we not, a way that if a property is being illegally used, there's a process that that property can be shut down using a nuisance abatement ordinance? Yes. Okay? That being said, what we're talking, and that, I don't see that as eminent domain. Now, a lawyer may say it is, but I don't see that as eminent domain.
Just to explain this and to try to be a little clearer on that point, the declaration of blight, potentially, in the declaration of blight, you could include crime in the area as one of the elements of blight. However, that is not the criteria that the Urban Renewal Authority will use to determine whether or not a particular property should be acquired or if the owner won't sell, condemned. The criteria they would use is whether or not it's necessary for the elimination of blight in the area, which is the whole purpose of urban renewal. So it's not, that, they will not determine whether or not we're going to acquire this property because crime is occurring on this property. They're going to determine, is this acquisition necessary to implement this plan to eliminate the blight in the area?
Urban renewal also could do eminent domain, could condemn a property, to bring properties together without blight even involved, based on the plan that we, and that's the one that I was concerned about the most, is item C. And so, you know, I mean, we talk about crime all the time, but for me, the biggest concern I have is that somebody owns a property that is fully, it's doing what it's supposed to do, and it gets taken just because Okura already owns property adjacent to them. I mean, that's the issues that I am most concerned about, because we did give Okura that authority. I don't think Okura is going to exercise that authority, but I think that, but we did give them that authority. So.
Hasn't blight already been determined?
Yes, it's already been determined to be a blighted area. I believe that was back in July, is when the declaration of blight was-
But not on each property. Each property isn't blighted. It's just the area is blighted.
You don't have to determine each property is blighted.
If the area is determined, which we did, then everything inside that area is blighted. You don't have to prove blight on a particular piece of property.
How I read the Okura plan was, to take it, using eminent domain, you did, on each property. But maybe I just read it wrong.
They would have to determine, under the criteria, A is that the property is blighted, abandoned, or unimproved, and that the acquisition is necessary to remove or prevent the spread of blight. So, based on the, they have to, following set of findings, they're supposed to make that finding. So you might want to get comments from Leslie on that, or from Kathy, to further amplify that.
Thank you. Councilman Griner is correct that it's sort of a two-stage analysis. The blight finding is what makes the area as a whole eligible for an urban renewal plan. But that finding itself doesn't dictate the findings as to individual property. So what we've attempted to do this precisely because we're aware that this is a fundamental concern, and I think a value for protecting private property is something that we share, and that's why a theoretical discussion about it is so interesting to us. But I think it's important here to look at the facts and to focus on what we're really trying to do in this area, and that is to revitalize it and redevelop it. So in some sense, I would hate to see the discussion on this point, which we need to get right, and it's nothing to discount that, detract from really what the larger objective is, and that is to do for this area of town what needs to be done. That being said, I think it's important to understand that within that finding of blight, what we've attempted to do here with language that we've worked out in community meetings, we've gotten buy-in from local property owners, that this will work, that they have confidence in this system, that one of four things has to obtain, as Mr. Griner points out. One is that that individual property is blighted, and that we need to acquire that in order to remedy the blight and to implement a redevelopment plan, which, by the way, is not just to take this from party A and transfer it to party B. It's in order to do a public plan where you haven't dictated who the final owner is going to be. It's not about switching pieces around from one private owner to another. I think it's also worth pointing out very briefly how this process works, that there are a number of protections, and that the shift to eminent domain happens very late in the process. And part of why I think it's important to keep the eminent domain piece as simple and clear and streamlined as possible is that we want to treat all property owners the same. I mean, in fairness to them, someone that negotiates in good faith and who has a vacant piece of property, and we can come to an agreement on price, should be treated just as well as someone who won't negotiate, who's been a rotten landlord, who's going to fight it tooth and nail all the way, and who may have strong political connections and lean on council members to get a really good price. I mean, they're only going to come and object if they're not happy with what we've been able to work out. And I see this as being really a last-ditch situation. It is rare, and so that point cuts both ways. Okay, it's rare, so what's the big deal? On the other hand, it's precisely those ones where we actually have to resort to eminent domain that I think the fight in front of this council is not going to be a constructive one. It's not about have we used other means. We will have used other means. This is when the rubber hits the road. People will be unhappy now and then because we have not overpaid them for their property. And that's when they will come complain to council.
Okay. Leslie, thank you. All right, we have a motion?
Her comment goes to the heart of what I said last time. There's no question that, once you aggregate the property, it will become more valuable. Not, and the person, the people that receive the best benefit of that are the people that then buy it, not the guy that owned it and sat on it for whatever reason forever. I would much prefer than this approach, there'd be some way that a person who owned the property could participate some way in the future financial benefit that the guy that had more money than he did or was able to get this done, some way that, I look over, I look over where it is now, and I think, I think we've had this conversation before. I look at the area that was taken when the Centennial Expressway gutted what was the black community in Oklahoma City. And I see the people that benefited by that, and they're not, I said this a week ago, they're not the people that lost their property. They're people that look like me, that had enough money to buy it and sell it to somebody else that looks, doesn't look like me, that makes, can buy a million-dollar unit. And there ought to be, to me, the fundamental fairness goes to try to share some of that financial windfall that happens. And without that, I think them appealing to this body is a mistake. I think that will politicize it, and I think that's a mistake. But that doesn't undercut the fact that the guy that gives up his property because, in many reasons, because of things the city did, not, or urban renewal did, not their own fault. There are people that still live in that area down there, south of the Health Sciences Center, that wouldn't like, that would have preferred the ordinances being forced with regard to mowing and upkeep and all that. And as a result of them not being enforced, the guy that still owns a house, his house is worthless now, virtually. So he's going to have to give up his home- So he's going to have to give up his home because the city failed to enforce its other ordinances, to some extent. If there was a way that that person could somehow participate in the benefit that's going to come, the economic benefit that's going to come, then I'd be a lot more comfortable with the whole thing. And that was my objection to the plan in the first place. It's not that I'm opposed to the plan. I voted for the plan. It is that I think there's no fundamental fairness for the people that live, that are giving up their property in terms of what will happen five years from now, or in the case of the Deuce area, 40 years from now. There's just no, there's no fairness there. And I'd like to see, I have a hard time voting for this because I think this may not be the way to approach it. The way to approach it may be to look at what authority urban renewal has and find out how to change that authority. The idea of referring it back to urban renewal, asking if they'd like to give up authority, is a little bit, a little bit of a shaky way to do it.
I think your discussion is for another day, and it might be, a change in state law might be necessary.
It could be. But I think that, that's why I think sending this back is just a treadmill.
You're speaking against the resolution that we're discussing today.
But if I thought that the only way to get the point across that there has to be a fair or fairer way to take people's property, then I'd, if there's not one, I'd vote for the resolution, because I want to throw some sand into gears of a process that I think is basically unfair.
One thing I just want to add is that in this urban renewal plan, there is the provision for owner participation agreements. We've been adding that to some of the more recent amendments to urban renewal plans or the ones that we've updated recently. It allows for an owner to contribute his property, his or her property, to a development instead of us buying it from them.
How would the value of that be established?
It would be established through negotiations, but it'd be based on fair market value. And I mean, the owner would have to be willing to participate in the objectives of the plan, you know, to carry out the redevelopment. They'd have to be financially able to participate. In many cases, owners really just want to sell their property. But if they didn't and they wanted to participate in the development, they could.
Kathy, to take an area where people are impoverished in many, many cases and expect them to have the financial wherewithal to build a condo that sells for a million dollars, or rents for a million dollars, that's a, that's a-
They would participate with a developer. They would participate with us in selecting a redeveloper for the property, is how it would work. They would contribute the value of their property as, in essence, equity towards the project. It's a way to address the issues you're raising. I'm not sure it's, I'm not saying that it's a perfect solution, but it certainly is a step in the right direction, I think, to getting at what you're talking about.
My concern is it's illusionary. If you say you can participate by contributing your property, the property is truly, the value of it is greatly diminished by all the other circumstances. And then you expect them to be able to contribute financially to it, it's not going to work. It's just, it sounds good, but it doesn't work.
Their financial participation is the value of the property. I didn't mean that they would have other financial commitments.
Okay. All right. Let's get back to the amendment. Do we have a motion in a second from the two of you? All right. Any other discussion from council before we vote? All right, we're voting on the item on 9B. This is, would modify our current urban renewal rules and regulations and send it to them for review. The motion fails. Two, seven. All right, we're still on items from council. James, you have anything else for us today? Ed? Larry? Pete? David? John?
In a few days, we will celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. One of the most outstanding things about Dr. King, that he was a strong advocate for love. He was a strong advocate for love, not hate. So again, next, in a few days, we will celebrate his life. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. Pat? All right. City manager reports.
We do have a report on this morning regarding a pilot program for body-worn cameras. We discussed that briefly last week. We're looking at having a pilot program to start with 100 cameras. Chief, city's here to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, several months ago, we put together a working group of officers, the internal order of police and management to look at the body-worn cameras, primarily to develop policies and procedures. One of the first things you need to do before we decide to put them in use is to have those policies and procedures. So we worked on that. We've had discussions for months about how to go through this process, because body-worn cameras is really kind of inevitable. I mean, most major cities now are looking at that since the incidents in Ferguson and elsewhere, and the discussions about being open. Officers seem to be really supportive of the body-worn cameras, which pleases me. That's just an indicator they feel like they're doing the right thing out there, and they don't mind being videoed. What we'll do is we're planning on trying, go out for an RFP. We need to look at the companies. We need to look at the products. There's not that many out there right now, but we want to look at the companies that are there, look at the product, and see which product would best meet the needs of Oklahoma City. Once we do that, then we have picked a vendor that we want to, want to start with 100 cameras and do a one-year pilot, to look at the, you know, to look at the camera, how it works, how to manage it, and just give us an indication of what our needs are going to be and what the cost may be in the future.
Chief, could you talk a little bit about the issues, one, with open records, having, how that reflects upon ongoing investigations, and also talk a little bit about data management?
Okay. Some of the bigger costs here for these, for the body-worn cameras isn't the purchase of the cameras, but it's actually the management of that. So we're looking at, initially, when we do 100 cameras, we're going to have to hire four additional personnel just to manage that. We figure two people just to manage open records requests in dealing with, in dealing with those videos, because the way the open records is set up now with the law that changed in November, it leaves it pretty wide open, and as far as any video that we have would have to be released in a fairly timely manner. Gives us, it gives us the option of being able to redact or cover up some of the identity, which you'd have to do, but it would really put, it's going to put a huge burden on us with the way the law's written right now, as far as having to release a considerable amount of video, which also leaves us with a concern on not being able to hold that video until investigations are complete, whether they're internal or criminal. Had discussions with the district attorney, David Prater. He also has some of the same concerns. I mean, potentially, you could be investigating a crime, and with the open records and with having the video, the request could be made, and we have to release the video before crime, before crime's even been completely investigated. And I'll just give you an example of some of the detriment to that, is if you're investigating a crime and you haven't reached all the witnesses or been able to locate all the witnesses, or maybe even some victims. And what you want to do in a criminal investigation is you want to be able to get that information from what the witness saw, if they saw the crime occur, not what the witness saw in the video. And believe me, we get, we get a lot of instances where people will come in and lie about what they saw and, you know, just weren't able to corroborate that. If they see the video and have that information, it's going to be very difficult for us to determine what a witness actually saw compared to what they may have seen on the video. So it creates some challenges for that. There's, we've got policies and procedures in place. There'll be cases where we work, for instance, an individual that has information says, I don't want you, I want to be anonymous. I don't want to be videoed. You know, can the officer turn that video off, you know? And it's our opinion that there's going to be certain circumstances where the officer has to when dealing with witnesses or dealing with something like that where a witness doesn't want to be videoed. So you have to work with those types of issues. But the open record, Oklahoma and Washington, Washington's had, has a similar open record that's fairly similar to ours, and they have, for instance, they have one individual that's a blogger that's asked for every single video from day to day. And based on that open record, they have to provide it. So Seattle, for instance, in looking to put together the program, is even questioning whether or not they want to even go to body-worn cameras, based on the fact that it's just going to be, just overburden them in trying to provide all those videos based on the open record laws. So, you know, there's some issues that we're looking at right now, legal's looking at, as far as maybe we could, maybe possibly propose some amendments to state law, if we could get that to try to, we want to be open. We want to release the video. Right now, the question is timeliness and being able to maybe wait until we complete and finish some of those investigations, which we think is critical and it's really prudent in possibly doing that without affecting, without affecting that transparency and still being able to provide that video at some point. That explains that a little bit.
Yeah, Pete?
How's the cost under current law of providing the videos? Do we have to pay that, we, being the city, or does the quester have to pay the cost of it? How does that work?
Well, I believe there's, there's set fees for asking if we have to provide a product, depending on how we provide it and whether or not it's the media. Generally, right now, we don't, we don't charge the media for any of those requests. If there's, if you're talking about a blogger or you're talking about somebody like that, they would have, they would still have to pay for that product if we had, per page or per-
It's $4 for DVD, so it's a very minimal cost.
For DVD or for pages.
It's a very minimal cost at this point in time. I think one of the things that's important to point out is that the police department has estimated that this first year initial cost to be $405,000 for the 100 cameras on that. The cost of the cameras is only $74,000 of that. The rest of it is managing the data, storing the data, licensing fees on the cameras, and I think there's some other costs in there, but it's-
It's a personnel cost is the biggest one.
And we're not opposed to any of that. It's just as we go and gear up to it, it's just we want to do it in a measured fashion to get into it.
I personally think it's really a step in the right direction. The only, if I have a, if I have a concern about it is we didn't announce that we were looking into it earlier, because I think that would have been helpful to the community to know that we hadn't just ignored it. I think the fact, the long period of time that went from when it became an issue until we announced this, and that's just the fact that I'm gifted with 2020 hindsight, I can tell you that. But I, but I appreciate it. That and another action you took this week are an indication of what I, of why I have so much confidence in you personally. I want to tell you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ed, you may not know the answer yet, but when would you envision that officers would be able to turn the cameras off? I mean, if they're, last week, we heard about the Holt's Claw incident, and I'm wondering if the officer could turn it off in that case. But also, I mean, just if officers are getting a coffee or just talking amongst themselves, I mean, when, when could they, and could they not turn it off? Or is that-
Well, the purpose of cameras is to record your interaction with the community on an incident. Every traffic stop, for instance, an officer, when he gets out of his car, will have to have that camera on when approaching on a traffic stop. Nothing usually happens on a traffic stop except the exchange of paperwork. Okay? That has to be recorded. You don't want to record, you can't record an officer, if he's taking a lunch break, he should be able to take a lunch break without every conversation being recorded. If he goes to the restroom, obviously, you don't want that recorded. You know, there's things that, plus, plus you can't afford to pay to store 24/7. Storage is a huge, huge cost. And just storing the incidents themselves, but every interaction, every call they take, every response, or anytime they're going to have to deal with an issue. If they get into and take a domestic call, the camera's on, they go to the domestic, you know, you know, there's issues about recording the victim.
Logistically, how does it work? Do you, I mean, the officer pushes a button or somebody else pushes a button?
The officer would be responsible for doing that, and you have policies and procedures in place that say when you can and you can't. And then you have to hold them accountable. If they didn't turn it on or they failed to turn it on. If you had an incident like Holt's Claw, obviously, I would doubt that if he's going to commit a crime, that he's going to turn it on. But he did have a traffic stop, and we can prove that. Well, that would be something where you would also hold him accountable for not having that on. And there would be a consistent pattern in a Holt's Claw case. But we had other, we had other evidence in other meetings also. We have AVL in our cars that also shows where they make that traffic stop. So you have a lot of different evidence you use in those types of investigations to corroborate what happened.
Okay.
It's not an end-all, but it's a good tool and process.
Yeah. Yeah. Dave?
Mechanically speaking, there's not a live feed to some central location by these cameras, is there? It's just being filmed and maintained within the camera itself.
Correct. It's digital, and when an officer finishes his day, he actually has to tag, because there'll be certain cases that need to be kept for a long period of time. So they'll have to be tagged.
Explain that for a second, chief, because one of the keys is being able to dig out these things and such. So talk to me about tagging the data.
Well, they're tagged, they're tagged by the officer based on the type of crime it is, which goes in and helps us be able to pull up cases, just like we pull up reports based on their crime incident number. Based on these tags that they're made, they give them a level of priority, those types of things. And those, that information has to be kept and stored longer. The people that manage that, at some point, will have to purge things, because if it's a general traffic stop, you're issued a ticket, there's no reason to, if we, depending on where we decide to store it, for instance, a lot of them are contracting and storing it in the cloud. If we store it, we have to pay for that. Well, at some point, we don't want to have to pay for that forever. At what point do you pull a regular traffic stop out, you know, that really nothing occurred except a traffic ticket? You want to take that out, because you don't want to pay for that forever. So there's some other technology they're looking at, because there may be technology where we could actually, we could get our own server if we elected to go store things in the cloud, to pull them out and store them long-term in our own server, which would keep us from having to pay for that. But, you know, that's, you know, that's the officer's responsibility at the end of the day. Answer your question, no, it's not live feed. They go in, they download it to the system, and at that point, access is made.
Right. And I would assume they're similar to these GoPro-type cameras that people can wear on their bodies. But in regards to that, is it, say, worn around their chest area? And then how easy is it for somebody, if he gets into a confrontation, to pull the camera off of the officer?
Right. It's not, it's not a perfect system, yeah. It can be damaged, it can be pulled off. Their systems can be worn on, you know, on their shirt, systems could be worn on their epaulettes up here, and they have systems that can be worn with sunglasses that attach. And this is actually the best one, but it's not necessarily the one that's commonly used.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you, chief, for looking into this, and thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Yeah. It does seem like we may need some conversation with the state on the Open Records Act, because we certainly don't want people, you know, questioning whether or not they should make a domestic violence call based on the fact they don't want it videotaped and their next-door neighbor can request a copy of it. I mean, there's, I think there's some, there's some issues here that need to be addressed, but in general, I think we, we're encouraging you to go full speed ahead with this.
Thank you.
But it's not as easy as one might appear on first glance. Okay. Anybody else have anything for chief? All right. Anything else on city manager reports?
No, sir.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Samuel Hills. Good morning. I will need your name and address for the record.
My name is Samuel Hill, senior. Address is 6504 North Brandis Drive, Oklahoma City. Actually, thought I'd put on to speak about the northeast redevelopment, but I just want to say that, again, my name is Samuel Hill. I'm the president of the Must See Investment Group. I'm here today also with our CEO, Randy Walts, Jr., and our founder and director, Michael Hall. The Must See Investment Group was founded in 2011 to help assist minority business owners and future business owners in Oklahoma City to establish their business, to help market their products and services, and to help build a marketplace of customers to share their products and services. To date, we have helped nearly two dozen small businesses here in Oklahoma City, as well as a few in Texas. With the announcements of the Economic Empowerment and Redevelopment Zone in the east side of Oklahoma City, we'd like to present to you our vision of a small business incubator and technology center. Our plan is to continue assisting small startups and getting from the funding and idea stage through launch of their product or their service. As a member of the new Small Business Incubator Technology Center, startup founders will have access to advisors that will help them with the processes of starting up and establishing their businesses. A lot of times, especially in minority communities, just saying a business plan, they look at you with deer in headlights because they don't even know what the process of doing with a business plan is. Our goal is to help small businesses with that. We also will help them with marketing, branding, and financial and business planning. Members also have the ability to have access to learn about new technologies such as 3D printing, cloud computing, social analysis, and mobile platforms. Our desire is that when you talk about redevelopment, that you're looking at truly redeveloping the community. I grew up half my life here-